Good evening. My name is Marisa Bono, Chief Strategic Officer for Via Metropolitan Transit. Thank you for joining our live interactive telephone town hall as we host an open conversation about the future of Via Metro Transit, workforce development, and economic recovery. O prima estrella cero, estrella cero, ahora para escuchar en español. This event is one in a series of telephone town halls that will give us at Via a chance to speak directly with you, the community, and answer your questions. For our phone participants, we would like to invite you to watch the livestream by visiting keepsamoving.com. Scroll down to the streaming player toward the bottom of the page. We have some important information to share with you this evening with some exciting guests. Please welcome our esteemed panel tonight. With me, I have Jeff Arnt, President and CEO of Via. We have Via Board Chairwoman Hope Andrade and former Mayor and U.S. Housing Secretary, Henry Cisneros, who actually served on the San Antonio City Council that helped create Via Metropolitan Transit. To all of you, all of our esteemed guests, thank you for being here tonight. As I mentioned, this is an interactive forum, and we would love to hear from you. We will be taking as many questions from participants as we possibly can live on this event. If you have a question, you can press star three on your phone keypad at any time, and you will be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you will be live on the call, and you'll be able to ask your question directly. If you're streaming the event on the website, simply type your name and your question below the streaming player. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, and we're going to jump right in. Henry, I'd like to hand the conversation over to you now and let you explain what's taken place over the past week and get this conversation started.
Marisa, thank you very much for your hard work in our community in many capacities, but now in your role of serving our transit system, our system of transportation. Thank you. It's a special honor to join Jeff Arnt and Hope Andrade, the Chair of the Via Board, for this conversation strictly designed to be of informational value to our participants. We're here to answer questions. We're here to share information with you that is important in thinking about the Via system. I'd like to begin by asking both Hope and Jeff just to set a little sense of their background, to give a sense of what they do and their origins, because they both made a very important decision to give critical amounts of their time to transportation, to transit in San Antonio. And I think it's important that we all understand how they came to that, why they see it as important. Let's start with Hope Andrade. Distinguished background, as you know, as Secretary of State of the state of Texas, head of the Texas Department of Transportation, and now in her second term, second tour as the chairperson of Via. Hope, thank you very much for your great, great service for our country, our state, and our city.
Well, Henry, thank you so much for your great leadership for this community of ours. And to our listeners and our viewers, thank you for your time and for your interest in Via. I always like to describe myself as that I've been an entrepreneur for a lifetime. Born and raised in San Antonio, I grew up, I think, where we've got the same neighborhood, Henry, that we grew up. I'm also a Prospect Hill kid. But I depended on Via to take me to school, to take me to my after-school jobs. I worked at a very early age.
You know, I came from a very small town in Indiana, and to think that I am part of a conversation with a former head secretary, former mayor of the city of San Antonio, former councilman of the city of San Antonio, those are part of them. And then, on the other hand, former Secretary of State, great State of Texas, is like, this is the kind of experience you have to pinch yourself about. I graduated from University of Notre Dame with a civil engineering degree, and I had a transportation emphasis. I've been in public transportation for, I'm beginning my fifth decade. I spent about half of that time in Houston with Houston Metro as it was first formed up, and ended my career there shortly after opening the first leg of light rail. But 25 years was a very broad, saw a lot of change in 25 years. What got me into transportation was I moved from San Jose, California with my young bride, six months, we were married six months, to Houston, Texas. And we each had our starter cars, which meant neither of our cars had air conditioning. So we would commute, we would carpool into downtown every day with our windows down, stuck on the traffic, and you can imagine the smell and the heat and everything. But Houston had an HOV lane, and these buses kept flying by, and they had condensation in the window. And so I said, that's where we need to be. And so I started riding, riding Houston Metro before I started working for them. But what really engaged me in public transportation from very early on is the fact that when you work in public transportation, of all the realms of transportation, public transportation is where you know that you are touching lives in an extraordinary way, that you are providing perhaps the only access that many people have to livelihood, to a job. And if you go to the Via's website, you can hear wonderful story of a Miss Garcia Garcia, who just graduated from the Young Women's Leadership Academy, is going to MIT, very impressive, but she used Via to get there every day. And so Via played an instrumental part in her ability to move on. Well, since Houston, I went to work for Texas Transportation Institute, which is part of A&amp;M University System. I went to work for a private bus company. We ran service under contract. And then there was an opening for a deputy CEO when Keith Parker was the CEO of Via. And I was convinced to apply for it. Moved to San Antonio in 2012. If I have any point of shame in my life, it's a shame that I did not discover San Antonio earlier, because this is an extraordinary city that I have my roots in now, and I am so proud and pleased to be able to serve this wonderful community.
Jeff, just say a word, your impression of the San Antonio system, of the Via system as you encounter it. Just say a word about how you envision that.
So I'll tell you about the San Antonio system. I can tell you from the Houston Metro perspective, whenever we would do a peer analysis of other groups, and especially if it had to do with costs, dollars, right, you never wanted to include Via, because Via was nationally famous for running a solid, basic transit system on a shoestring. And since I have been here, I had Houston Metro reach out to me, because they were asked to look at the sizing of their staff. And I sent them our staffing schedule, and they called me, and they said, no, we need the complete schedule for our analysis. And I said, you have the complete schedule. And then there was just silence, and it's okay, thank you very much. And they, again, learned you don't compare yourself to Via when you want to talk about being lean and mean. And that's pretty much the kind of system we have, partly because, you know, the funding that Via has is at a lower rate than Houston or Dallas and Austin. And so we run a service that's primarily designed to help people who frankly lack other transportation options connect to the things that can improve their quality of life. That's really what we are.
And again, for those who are just joining us now, this is an interactive forum. We want to hear your questions. If you have a question, press star three on your keypad at any time to get in the queue. Again, press star three. If you have a question, if you're participating online, you can submit your question below the streaming player. And, Henry, go ahead.
Let me know. I've just been told we have about 1,500 people on the line, which is a wonderful grouping. I think any of us would be very pleased to be able to go to a group of citizens, 1,500 strong, about the size of the majestic theater, to answer questions about Via. Well, until we get Hope back, I'm going to concentrate then on the conversation with Jeff. Jeff, tell me at a kind of a level of common sense, what is it about transportation that is important to the functioning of a city? I mean, I think we all have a sense that we understand transportation. But in all your years and all your experience, where does it fit into the big picture of how you create a great city? Where does transportation fit in with jobs, incomes, education, health, other priorities? Is it at that level? And if not, where exactly does it fit in?
Well, I think it's really at a very high level, because all those things, Henry, that you just mentioned are so important, right? Jobs and access to healthcare, access to education, all of those things are important. But, you know, I kept saying that word, access, right? Because transportation in whatever form is the way you get there. So in many respects, I think of, you know, a city as being organic. And if you think of the city as being organic, transportation is essentially your circulation system, your bloodstream. And we all know what happens if there is a problem, you know, choke-off in the bloodstream. It's not good for the health of the organism. And so, you know, mobility is essential to life.
I see.
And, you know, we're currently in a time when people are less mobile out of the circumstances, right? And I think many of us that have worked from home have discovered, A, that it's possible, but at least for me, I can say, on the other hand, it's not nearly as enjoyable, because I want to be with people. And I think we all, that's the human nature, right?
Jeff, we just came through a two-year experience working with Via, where we focused on the word mobility, not just transit or transportation, but mobility, because we're talking about all of those things that move people and move goods across the city. People getting to their job, people getting to their school, people getting to their doctor's appointment, people getting to their consumer trips, to the store or the mall or groceries, people going to recreation of all kinds. So transportation is intrinsic, it's inherent in the workings of a city. And we focused in that effort, which we call Connect SA, on everything from sidewalks and micro-mobility bicycles, to city streets and freeways. But always, public transportation was a big part of this, because we were really trying to focus on how do we move big numbers of people environmentally responsibly. Tell me a little bit about where you think our overall mobility agenda was when we, before the pandemic began. Just give me a sense of where do you think we were? And then in a moment, we're going to go back to talk about the pandemic itself. But I think we're going to have Hope back, too. Go ahead, if you would.
Would you like me to answer that question first?
Yeah, please, please.
Okay, so during that two-year period, you know, as we explored it, we know that we know that there are, in every mode, there are needs, right? We know that each of those modes typically receives funding from various sources, right? So if you look across modes, you know, you have the highway and roadway mode. And in the state legislature has done a great deal to help provide financial resources, especially on the highway system. But then we have bicycle mode, and I think we know that the city is starting and has a growing bicycle program, but it is still in its infancy, so to speak. We've seen other modes of transportation emerge and actually, to some degree, evaporate. You know, scooters were hot, hot, and you couldn't walk anywhere without running into one. And today, I think they have settled down a bit, and bicycles are perhaps, you know, ramping back up. With respect to, with respect to the transit system, we have, we have really worked hard within the resources we have to enhance the system. And so we've, we've worked hard on increasing frequency on bus routes, which is very important, and increasing speed along certain corridors that we call Primo. You know, but we are kind of at that point of the system that we have on the street is the system that San Antonio can afford.
So I understand we have Hope back, and that's a great thing. Hope, you were, I want to stay just a moment on your biography, because it's so important. Two things. One, I want to hear a little bit and have the participants hear about your time at Tech Dot, your time as Secretary of State, and what insights that gave you. But most importantly, what brought you to transportation as a place where you want to make your public service?
Well, I think I cut off when I was talking about that I grew up in the Prospect Hill area.
Right.
So I took the bus to school, and I took the bus to work after school. And after I got married, we only had one car, and my husband took the car, so I took the bus to work. And years later, you know, I was mentioning also that when I attended our Lady of the Lake Weekend College, I took the bus to school, because it gave me an opportunity to study while I was headed to school versus driving. The other thing is that once I became an employer, I depended on public transit to get my employees to work.
Very important. And you've done a lot in the private sector. You've had numerous businesses, and that's an important consideration for you, getting your workers to the job.
Yes. Then I went to serve the great state of Texas, and I was on the Texas Transportation Commission. Interestingly enough, I was a commissioner that worked closely with the rural public transit authorities. And it just reminded me how important public transit is for everyone that may not have an automobile.
So the mayor asked you to serve as Chair of Via, and this is your second term at that. You did it once before, and then he asked you to come back. Tell me just the third term, okay, the logic of your service at Via. Tell us.
Yeah, well, and I'll tell you, when I went to, when I was Secretary of State, it confirmed that public transit is part of economic development.
Yeah.
When I would visit with companies that were interested in coming to Texas, they would ask about the Public Transit Authority in that community. They wanted to know, are they going to have availability to get their employees to and from work? And so when I returned to San Antonio, and I had already done a term of public transit, and the mayor and the judge asked me, I jumped, because I wanted to share what I had learned and how important public transit was for our community.
Thank you, Hope. Thank you very much for your service, and thank you very much for your answer. I am told we now have over 2,000 people who are on the line. So this is a wonderful way to communicate. This system is a great way to have a kind of an intimate conversation with your leaders of transportation in San Antonio, as if they were in your living room. I understand that we have a caller in with a question. Marisa, would you please put the caller on for us?
Yes, happy to do that. And once again, for those who are listening, this is an interactive forum. We can hear your questions live. If you have a question, press star three to get put in the queue. And if you're participating online, just submit your question below the streaming player. And I'll tell you, Henry, we have a lot of questions coming in, wanting to know more about this compromise, funding compromise that was announced last week. And Melanie has a question about that. And Melanie, go ahead, you're live.
Thank you. This is Melanie Coffin, and I am the Executive Director for Disability SA. And we serve individuals with all types of disabilities throughout San Antonio and connecting them with resources. So obviously, this is a huge concern of ours. And with the 1/8 cent measure not going into, that will appear under this negotiation on the ballot in November, with it not going into effect until 2025, what are the plans to close the gap on the deficit so that those who are in the greatest need outside the core service area aren't being denied transportation services through the projected cuts that have been put out there? As you can imagine, I'm even more specifically interested in the 1,300 people who live with a disability, who have no other transportation options that are slated to get cut in late 2021, when the CARE Act funds run out. So what measures are included in the recent negotiations to ensure that everyone who depends on public transportation is not left out in the cold, as the mayor stated in the city council session on June 18th?
That is a wonderful question. Thank you for asking it. And obviously, it points out the near life or death kind of service that Via provides for people who need to get to medical appointments where great matters of their health are involved, or to work with disabilities. Let me just say a quick word about, set the context for this, and then I want to ask both Hope and Jeff to answer. But the context is that Via lives off of 1/2 cent of a sales tax, which was originally intended to be for 1 full cent. Over the years, that other 1/2 cent, the one that Via is not using, has been used for other purposes, a whole range of purposes. Most recently, 1/8 of it goes to pre-K, early childhood education, a very laudable purpose. It also will be on the ballot, and that, we hope, will pass. The other, another 1/8 is available, because we're coming to a different method of funding some water protection programs. We've devised a way to work with SARS and work with the city to make sure that that aquifer program is covered for the long run. So the 1/8 is there to work with. We originally had hoped that the 1/8 might be available exclusively for transportation. And then the pandemic hit, and it became so obvious that there are people in San Antonio who are exceedingly poor, who need training and preparation to go into better jobs, who need scholarships to be able to go on with school, and that's going to be the long-term basis of our economy. So we have come up with a way. The mayor has led the way in the negotiation, a great, great effort of leadership on the part of Mayor Nuremberg and County Judge Nelson Wolf. And what we've come up with is as a plan where for three years, the 1/8 goes to create a fund that will fund education and scholarships for three years. And then after the three years, the 1/8, which hasn't been available to Via recently, will go to transportation indefinitely into the future, necessary to build out the transportation system. Now, in that interim period, the 1/8 is being used for the scholarships and so forth. Via will work with the city to take other kinds of funding that amount to about $10 million a year or so and allocate them to transportation. So we'll not be without funding, and it will not be necessary to quote, "cut services." Should be able to maintain and get to that point where in three years, the larger expansion of the system with modern technology and so forth is possible. So that's the context. And now let me ask Hope, who is a very, very strong leader in holding on to that 1/8 for this necessary purpose, transportation, right at the heart of our economic hopes for San Antonio. Hope?
Well, thank you, Henry, so much. You know, it was, we were just so happy when we learned that we had found a framework that the mayor was happy to support in, because our goal was that we wanted to work together. We're fortunate that the CARES Act has helped us so that we will not affect any service to any of our riders. So that made us very comfortable in moving forward with a compromise. The fact that we won't receive it immediately, that we will wait, I believe, till, the details are still being worked, was the Board of Trustees felt that we could live with that. Our goal was to secure viable funding for the long run. It was time that Via had this funding available. And so the fact that it will revert back to Via after the funding is collected for the workforce development, we felt that we indeed had managed to secure funding for Via for the long term. Now, of course, it's up to our voters now, but we are certainly going to work diligently to make sure that our voters understand the important role that Via plays in our community, for our riders, for our community, and of course, for the prosperity of San Antonio. Jeff, if you'd like to add something?
Thank you.
Sure. First of all, I would add, and I wanted to make this remark after Hope did her introduction, that I had a gentleman who wanted me to help write a chapter of a book about what a CEO would see as the perfect chair. And I said, oh, I can send you a picture of the perfect chair, and that would be Hope Andrade. So it meant for a very short chapter, I'm afraid. But I would say this. First of all, when we were looking, and we had described before the kind of service reductions we might have to do based upon a five-year scenario. And as you noted, up until '21, we were fairly well-covered. As Hope said, the CARES Act is providing us funds that kind of help make up for the sales tax that we lose. Sales tax, as Henry said, we get a 1/2 cent sales tax, and it comprises 77% of the revenue that operates Metro, so Via. So you can imagine the size of, you know, when you have a contraction in sales tax, what that does to the budget. The other thing that the mayor did in this process was, as Henry said, commit to $10 million a year over a five-year period, so $50 million. Our deficit, that cut the deficit in half. That cut the deficit in half that doesn't even begin to arrive until sometime maybe in 2022. And at that level, we are confident that we are going to be able to make adjustments internal to the organization with respect to the size of staffing and the expenditures, discretionary items, that we won't have to reduce any service. We may choose to restructure service a bit, but we don't have to reduce service, and probably, most importantly, we won't have to take anybody who's within Via Trans service area today and remove them from Via Trans. In fact, all the planning that we're doing is oriented at grandfathering any Via Trans customers that are impacted in any way through this process. So essentially, the city is providing us $10 million a year to help us through that period of time, and then the 1/8.
Jeff, tell us about, in order to respond to the caller, disability services as you see them through this period and going forward. What can we expect in terms of specific services for persons with disabilities over the long run? I will say that my father, who had had a stroke, and at about age 70 or so, he lived to 86, but in order to get transportation, use Via Trans with the disability caused by his stroke. And we fell in love with the Via Trans system. I just couldn't imagine something so precise, so dependable, so accessible, so courteous. So this has been a strength of Via. But tell us about it going forward.
Sure. Well, we have kind of two levels, two kinds of services. I shouldn't say level service, because I want them to both be excellent. And so let me start with Via Trans, and let me start by also recognizing that the operators we have in the Via Trans system are extraordinary people. We have operators who have been driving Via Trans for a very long period of time, have strong relationships with their clients, they understand the client's needs. And so we're extremely proud of the work of the Via Trans operators in particular. Via Trans will continue to operate as it has operated. Now, during the pandemic, in order to achieve social spacing, we are actually providing each customer their own trip. So they're not sharing that ride with any other customers. They may bring their personal care assistant, they may bring their guests. So there may be three people on the vehicle, but they're all the same party, if you will. And so during this period of time, that's how we're handling Via Trans service. As we return to the new normal, we will return to the shared trip concept, where some folks are on with more than one person. But we are maintaining all that service. We are committed to reaching a 90% on-time service level. That's a commitment we've made to the Federal Transit Administration that sends us money. So we like to keep them happy, and we want to serve the customers well. The other thing we do is...
Yes. Let me ask you. Can you speak to any improvements that technology will allow going forward that people with disabilities can expect? And we have another caller, so if you would address that, and then I want to move to the next caller.
Okay, sure. So actually, we have instituted a fairly significant number of measures, technology measures. We have applied, and I'm very proud again of Via for having really focused on applying technology first on the customer side and last on the internal side. So our accounting system may not be the most current, but our Via Trans system is. And so Via Trans, we now have Via Trans online services, where the customer can go online, they don't have to call a reservationist, they just go online and book their trip, they can cancel it 24/7 if they need to cancel it. But maybe most importantly, the thing that excites me the most, they can track the vehicle, much like if you use Uber or Lyft, and you can track the vehicle as it's arriving to your home. Within one hour of their trip time, they can bring up that, and they can see where that vehicle is, which is very important of the window that we arrive at.
Great.
Henry?
All right. Let's go to Marisa, let's go to the next caller.
Henry?
I'm sorry. Yes.
May I add, may I add a message to the disability community?
Yes.
Your story, your story, and Trustee Malone, who's a great champion on our board, Your story and Trustee Malone, who's a great champion on our board, reminds us every day of why we must always have funding for our disability community. This is the only means of transportation for them to get to their jobs, to get to their medical appointments, to get out to visit their family. And so this is what drives us each and every day, and this is why we work so hard to make sure that we have viable funding and that we will continue to have it. So I want to assure that--
Wonderful. Thank you.
That what is very, very--
And Trustee Colmo now. Sure, Trustee Colmo now is with VIA Trans, right? On a monthly basis?
We have about 25 minutes or so left in the hour that's available to us, and we're up to over 2,100 participants. So this has been a wonderful way to exchange information. Marisa, you have another caller.
Thank you. And Henry and the panel, I wanted to let you know, I'm getting a lot of live questions and online questions about what will happen for VIA if the 1/8 cent sales tax proposal fails in November. And I'm going to bring Mark live now with a related question to that proposal. Go ahead, Mark, you're live.
Yes, this is Mark Sullivan Culling. I'm a biomedical engineer and an inventor. Thank you, Henry, Jeff, and Hope for convening this forum. So I have a proposal. Most of you know that in 1991, I invented an alternative transportation system named Bike SA. And then our Councilman Peak saw the value in this visionary new level of infrastructure for our city, and he helped secure the 8-cent funding for this Bike SA system. And parts of it have been named after him. But now I have invented a novel World Spare for San Antonio named Text Position. It's a system for solving problems afflicting taxes in a unique fashion. So I propose we convene a forum to incorporate Bike SA into VIA and Text Position, World Spare, as a job creation, employment, and economic development solution. And you can visit my website at marksullivanresearch.com or textposition.org. And I, Henry, we have--
Thank you for your question, Mark. Sorry to cut you off. Like Henry said, we're short on time here, but again, we are getting a lot of questions about the proposal of what will happen.
Let me speak to the gentleman's question first. Thank you so much for your creativity and inventiveness and the contributions you've made to San Antonio. And the contribution you made to the Howard Peak Trail system is very significant. That is part of our mobility plan going forward, to finish 26 more miles of trails that will make it possible for every creek and the river itself to have trails. And eventually, they're wrapped around in a way that you can go completely around the city in several sort of inner loops. It's a wonderful system, and I predict not only will it be a source of fitness and health for our citizens, but it's going to be a major touristic attraction that brings people to a city that understands fitness, outdoor life, healthy exercise. So thank you so very much for that. Your ideas are good. VIA is, of course, a transit agency, but it's also an economic development force, as Hope said earlier. And I suspect they'll be open to your idea of finding ways to showcase the technology and the creativity that you have demonstrated here. So I know that they will be willing to work with you on something like this. Marisa, did you have another caller?
I do. I have a question now from Barbara. Go ahead, Barbara, you're live.
Well, thank you so much for having this forum. My name is Barbara Widhough, and as one in five of San Antonians as a senior, 60 years plus, what has your research found would be the most appropriate use of this tax to serve the needs of seniors in San Antonio?
Well, as we said, we talked about the 1/8 being, for the first three years, about training and preparation of people for the workplace. Obviously, that can accrue to the benefit of seniors as well. As we know, we have a senior tsunami in our country with the baby boomers who were born between 1946 and 1964, having reached 65 years of age, the first group in 2011. And it will continue for a long time as seniors get to 65 and live into their 70s and into their 80s. It will be the largest cohort of aging people in the history of the United States. So any city with a thought about how it enhances quality of life has to speak to the needs of seniors. And that involves retraining for workers who've been displaced, people who want to do something in retirement. More and more, people are talking about people working into their retirement years at some job of their choosing, something different than what they did in their career years. But obviously, it implies, it affects transportation as well. That means rolling stock that is user-friendly for people who have certain frailties as they age, where you step up from the street, the way that stations are built for rapid transit so that people can step directly onto the vehicle instead of having to go upstairs. It means things like VIA Trans, which Jeff talked about in the last segment. But let me ask Jeff if he could speak to specifically, what's the thinking, what's the advanced thinking in transportation circles about how we deal with the senior reality in our society?
So Barbara, if you can't see, my hair does reflect the fact that I'm part of that tsunami. So I have a very special interest in making sure that we maintain mobility as we move forward. So first of all, there's been a lot of technology change over the past probably 20 years to make sure that the vehicles themselves are designed to make it easier for people to board and alight. And all our boards, all our buses, I'm sorry, have ramps that make that easier. We have seats toward the front of the vehicle, make that easier. So there's been a lot of steps like that. VIA specifically has installed, well, we currently have about 2,400 shelters, so the waiting areas are a bit better in that regard. We have invested, and the 1/8 cent would allow us to further invest in higher frequency of service, which means, again, the wait for the person is going to be less. So you're at a shelter, you're not at the shelter for as long because that bus is going to come along. And we're also just finished the pilot, or we didn't finish it, we're continuing it, but we had a pilot that was declared successful for something we call mobility on demand. And in areas of the city that are not as urban, not as dense, not as replete a street network, we're offering service that's offered in an accessible van, and it essentially will pick you up at or near your home or place of business and take you anywhere within a 17-square-mile area or connect you to the bus route. And I think with respect to senior movement, that will be very helpful. And then I think, Henry, when we look at technology longer term, when we look at first and last mile connections from the system and the implementation of automated vehicles, in all respects, I think are going to go a long way toward maintaining mobility for our senior community.
Hope, you have any comments on this subject area?
Well--
Our senior services?
Yeah, I'm also into in that age bracket, so we're very conscious of that. But our goal is that our seniors have options. As Jeff mentioned, we're working on some innovative pilot programs. We want to make sure that no one is stuck, and that you have options. And, you know, having an automobile is expensive, and if you can take public transit and fulfill those needs, then that's what we're there for. We have very much in mind, our senior community.
Let me just underscore what both Hope and Jeff have said. I am excited about the prospects for what mobility on demand will do to transform transportation, public transportation as we know it. Imagine this, you're a senior living in your home, you want to go to the store, you want to go to the doctor's office, you want to go to the medical center, you have other errands to run, you use a computer app or your telephone to get people, to get a vehicle to your home, to your home, for you, like if you were calling a taxi. And it will drive you either within a given range around your area, or it will take you to where you can catch a bus that goes longer distances but is also senior-friendly. That is a revolution, to be able to use technology to call a vehicle to your front door and then use that. That now exists in the northeast part of San Antonio on a special pilot, and over 100,000 people have used it since last April, April a year ago. And it is now slated to go in the northwest side, in the southwest side, and eventually, there'll be about eight zones in San Antonio that lend themselves to a system like this. Got to be senior-friendly and very, very exciting. I understand that the caller was the representative from District One, City Council District One, on the Joint Commission on Elderly Affairs. So thank you for your service, thank you for advocating for the senior community, that's exactly why you're on that commission, to advocate, and you've enlightened a lot of people this evening by your question. I think Marisa has another question.
I do, Henry, I have a question here.
Marisa, I was just going to tag on to that for just a second, because a question would be, with the 1/8 cent, what difference would that make to senior transportation? And I'll just go to, as Henry said, we're looking at eight MOD areas, but those MOD areas all require funding through that 1/8 cent. We're looking at higher frequency service, like I mentioned before. Adding frequency of service requires those additional resources. So both of those pieces, as well as like an automated shuttle that would provide connections to the system, all those pieces are really reliant on that 1/8 cent.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We have a question now from Tony. Tony, go ahead, you're live. Are you there, Tony? Go ahead, you're live.
Do you have another caller lined up behind Tony?
I do. Actually, I can paraphrase Tony's question, and he wanted to, he had a statement, "In many years in San Antonio, my bus is often late, and I feel that sometimes the routes are inefficient. When are we going to catch up with Dallas?"
Jeff, do you want to speak to the issue of frequency and the issue of the routes, where the routes are placed? I know that our goal going forward has been to put bus routes in closer proximity to a greater percentage of San Antonians within a re-block walk or so of something like 80% of the population, and to try to reduce some frequency from 20 minutes to 12 minutes or even eight minutes in some cases. But all of this requires funding, and that's why this conversation is so important. But speak to your vision for the kind of traditional bus improvements of route and frequency.
So with respect to on-time performance, and I will tell you that for the last several years, we have struggled a bit with on-time performance because of the massive amount of construction, particularly downtown area. And again, technology is helping us because now we get alerts at our dispatch center, we know when buses are running behind, and we can take remedial action. The other thing is that frequency really also helps with reliability, because if a bus, let's say there was a bus that had an incident and was out of service, then another bus will come along fairly quickly. So that's another element of that. In our plan, the nexus of frequency and speed are the two things that will bring us, you compare us to Dallas, bring us closer to the Dallas system. The largest difference between Dallas and San Antonio system is the fact that Dallas did have a 1-cent sales tax from its beginning, and we have had the 1/8 cent sales tax from our beginning. So Dallas, over the last 20 years, generated about $6 billion more for investment, and that investment, those $6 billion allowed them to leverage federal dollars, which of course, VIA can't leverage because of the size of our funding right now. So again, that's why that 1/8 cent becomes an important step in moving us closer in that direction of being able to fund that kind of system.
But Jeff--
Henry, may I--
Yes, please, please, help.
Well, that's why this funding is so important. We hear the story about how long it takes people to wait for a bus, or how long it takes for them just to get to a bus stop. But without, we've been underfunded, and I don't want to go through the past. We've been underfunded, we haven't been able to do the things that Dallas and Houston and Austin have been able to do. That's why it's so important that our community support us at this election to get the funding that VIA needs. And I promise you, we're always looking for ways to better serve our riders and our community and make it competitive for economic development opportunities. But that's why the funding is so important. I can't stress it enough, it's just not for the riders. It's everyone benefits when we have an efficient and up-to-date transit system.
A related point, Jeff and Hope, is the data you have shown me concerning the essential role of VIA during this pandemic period for essential workers. As you know, just a few months ago, there were people who were designated essential. They had to go to work, they could not work from home. They had the kind of jobs that required them to be in an HEB store, to be in a meatpacking plant, to be a bank teller, to be a nurse, to be someone doing custodial work at the hospital, cleaning up toxic facilities and materials. People who had to get to a job related to transportation and moving of goods. Those stores needed to be filled with items, and somebody had to move them. And my recollection, and please, both of you speak to this, is that the VIA was a critical factor in getting essential workers to the workplace. Many of the people who were riding on VIA at that time said they didn't have a car, they were in a low-wage job, and they had to ride the bus five days a week, including often a weekend day. So it really speaks to that point. Do you want to say a quick word about that? We have one more caller, but I would like to speak to that briefly, whichever of you wishes.
Jeff, go ahead, and then I'll add to it.
Sure, okay. So first of all, yes, our typical rider, pre-COVID, our typical rider is a person who is in a household that is living at or below poverty level but is employed and is taking VIA to get to a job. And the kinds of jobs that our clients, that our customers have are typically those that you have to be present for. So almost by definition, many essential workers were already transit riders. And that is why, you know, we're still carrying 55,000 to 60,000 boardings a day, less than the 110 that we typically carry, but we're still carrying this large chunk of riders during the time in which people were encouraged, "Don't be out, don't be out running around unless you absolutely have to." But we know that the kinds of jobs that are traditional customers are the kinds, and so we're making, we make those connections. I want to remind everybody also that VIA operators and VIA mechanics and VIA cleaners are all also essential employees, providing an essential service that they cannot do from home.
Hope?
Well, and our workers have done an outstanding job, so we're very proud of them. But I encourage you that when you pass by a bus stop in the morning or in the evening, look at who's waiting for the bus. It's people in uniform that are going to work at a hospital, at a distribution center, at a grocery store. They're the workers that cannot work remotely, they have to get to work. So imagine during this recovery, if VIA did not exist, they wouldn't be able to get to work.
That's a powerful point, Hope.
So we want to make sure that we're there for them.
We are going to go to our final caller for the night and try to take us in the home stretch here. We'll hear the caller and then get some questions, and then I'd like to ask Hope and Jeff to just frame some final thoughts for tonight's program. Caller, please.
Thank you, Henry. Michael, we're going to go to you now. Go ahead, you're live.
Hi, this is Michael off of South Pressa. More and more people are beginning to use technology to plan their transportation options. And I was wondering what VIA might be able to do to integrate its route and schedule information into the travel planning apps like Apple Maps and Google and some of the other transportation apps.
That's a great idea, and just to prove that great minds think alike, Judge Nelson Wolf is rabid about this-- Judge Nelson Wolf is rabid about this point. So you're on the same wavelength as the county judge. Jeff, the technology is just booming all around us in applied transportation.
Yes, and so we're connected through some of those, like Google Maps, for example. We're connected in some respects. But you know, it goes beyond just that. And so one of the aspects of our future plan, as we would describe the kinds of things we would do with additional funding, is the development of an integrated app. But it's not just for cars and buses. It would also be for bike share. It could be for, if there were scooters out there, it could be for shuttle services, private shuttle services, that we would have a single integrated app. And I believe somebody, or as you recall, someone mentioned Dallas before. Dallas has invested in developing such an app. And they are beginning to market it. And so we're already kind of in the midst of discussing with them. Their greatest challenge, they said, is that there's been such a turnover within the transportation market that they got all the scooters, all the scooter companies all into their app. And then, you know, by the time the app opened, three or four of them weren't there anymore. So that's been their challenge. But we can learn from their challenge. And they will market to us this product at a very reasonable cost.
We're headed to the closing section here. I do want to just assure the last caller that this is an era in which the innovations we've seen in the technology field are being applied to public transportation. And many things are possible. But again, Via has the resources to apply them in the San Antonio case. Let me ask Jeff first and then Hope to bring us a final minute or so of their thoughts on the importance of transportation and the importance of gaining your support for funding transportation.
I want to share with everyone that everyone may not be transit-dependent and they may have a car. And I think we all are transit-reliant at some level. Because when we go to a restaurant and someone is serving us food, or we go into an office building and somebody has maintained it, we go into a medical facility and there are people there that are running lab work, et cetera, those people are often patrons of public transportation. And if they did not have that access, they could not enjoy that. As our chair has mentioned, we have been chronically underfunded since our beginning, quite frankly. And we want to avail ourselves of an opportunity to bring funding so that we can provide this city, which is a wonderful city, the kind of service they need, they deserve. And as a growing community, they will need and deserve even more.
Let me close this evening by thanking all of you who have tuned in. It's, to me, it's an amazing thing and an application of the technology we've been talking about that over 2,000 people could listen in and have a conversation on an important public policy question. What you've heard tonight is that we have a system in San Antonio that has been underfunded and that to keep pace, needs to have more resources and needs to compete with other competing needs in the city, even in the time of a pandemic. Secondly, what you've heard this evening